I would like to call the Monday, February 10th, 2020 meeting of the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. If I could ask everyone to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to everyone this evening, as well of those of you watching us from home. I will run through tonight's agenda. First item will be the consent agenda. Item two will be a public hearing for rezoning of Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms. Item three is a public hearing for planned unit development, PD concept plan, for Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms. Item four is a public hearing rezoning for Cambridge Park. Item five is a public hearing planned development, concept plan for Cambridge Park. Item six is a preliminary plat for Cambridge Park. Item seven preliminary plat for Eagles Creek. Item eight, other business, and then item nine, German. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
No move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Items two and three for Earhart Estates, the applicant has requested a continuance to the Monday, February 24th, 2020 meeting. I would entertain a motion to continue.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, on the request of the applicant, to continue to Monday, the 24th, the public hearing of rezoning of Earhart Estates at Chapman, as well as their planned unit development concept plan also to February the 24th.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a second from Commissioner Fairbanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items will be continued to the February 24th meeting. Before I start the public hearings, I'm going to run through the procedure for a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. I'll call for exhibits from our city attorney. Staff will give comments, presentation. The applicant will make their presentation. I will then ask for witnesses in favor, ask for witnesses opposed. Then I'll have a question and discussions between the commissioners. Then I'll close the public hearing and we'll consider it for a vote. So that leads us to item four, public hearing for rezoning RZ 01-20-7216, Cambridge Park. I'm going to open the public hearing. I will ask our attorney for the exhibits.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 25, 2020. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Mallon is going to make the presentation this evening for staff.
Yep. Thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission, Mike Mallon, acting community development director, on behalf of the city. This is a proposal for rezoning from SF-7 PRO, or single-family planned residential overlay, to SF-7/PD, or single-family planned development. In addition, the proposal also includes a planned development concept plan and a preliminary plat. This is known as the Cambridge Park project. The project is located north of Major Road, in between, or just west of Adams Dairy Parkway, and is highlighted here in orange. The site here, highlighted by the black and white dashed line, again, is currently zoned SF-7 PRO, and the request is to rezone it to SF-7 PD. The surrounding properties to the south and to the east are also SF-7 PD zoned, and the site to the, immediately to the west, has a mix of land uses in it, SF-7, some two-family zoning there as well. The proposed project will include 182 single-family detached houses. The detached house neighborhood lot is the proposed building type, and includes five open space and landscape tracks, as well as a park centralized in the community. Proposed rezoning would remove the existing Colonial Highlands planned residential overlay that has since expired, and propose to add a new planned development zoning district onto it with a PD concept plan. The, like I mentioned, the Colonial Highlands PRO did expire, and all of the other areas that were part of that original Colonial Highlands PRO have since been rezoned out of that PRO, and all of them have established a new planned development. So this application is in keeping with what those previous projects did, such as Hoot Isle Acres, Hoot Isle Ridge, and the Colonial Highlands properties to the south and to the east. The proposed site is just over 60.2 acres, 182 lots over 60.2 acres, is a net density of about 3.08 units per acre. To orient ourselves here to the site, plan a little bit more, north is to the left.
Hey, Mr. Mallon?
Yes?
Can I interrupt you for a second? I'm going to open the public hearing for the concept plan as well.
Oh, okay.
Because I skipped over that.
Okay.
So I'm going to also open the public hearing for the planned unit development concept plan, PDC-01-20-7215, and ask for those exhibits as well.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record for planned development concept plan, PDC-01-20-7215. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 25, 2020. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of letters sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
And then I just want to remind you, you'll be presenting the preliminary plat at the same time you're doing this as well.
Yes, I'll be presenting all three of them.
So we're going to be hearing items four, five, and six, and then we'll consider those all separately after I close the public hearings.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, there is an additional condition
Okay.
From staff for the preliminary plat, and that's been handed out to the members.
Yes. Thank you. And you may resume, Mr. Mallon.
Okay. I will not repeat myself.
Thank you.
The, to orient ourselves to the site here, left, to the left side of the page is actually north. Major Road runs along the right side here, so this is the southern portion of the property. Access to the property will come via two access drives, public roads off of Major Road. Public streets are proposed throughout the entire subdivision, and then there are two connections on the west side, which is down here, to connect into the existing Eagles Ridge subdivision. Public streets, like I said, will comprise the internal roadway. Sidewalk improvements will include sidewalks along Major Road, as well as four-foot internal sidewalks throughout the internal street network. Stormwater, there are proposed a number of detention ponds to handle stormwater management, tract A, tract C down here, and tract E. Those tracks also comprise the landscape and open space system that is being proposed as part of this development. Typically speaking, open space required for an SF-7 zoned project would be required to provide 10% of the overall site as open space, for a total of about six acres on a property this size. The applicant has significantly increased the amount of open space they're providing through these five open space tracks, as well as eight-foot trails to provide recreation, and I have a drawing here in a second. For grand total of 9.07 acres, or just over 15% of the site is being proposed as open space. As I mentioned, the development is proposed to include detached house and neighborhood lots, which is the base zoning of which the PD is based on. The applicant is requesting some modifications to that underlying zoning district as part of the PD. Specifically, those are reduced lot frontage widths on lots 169, 170, and 171, that they can't meet the minimum 65-foot lot width due to their location on the cul-de-sac. That is a pretty common occurrence that we see throughout the city. The second modification is to allow for lot frontages that are in excess of the 100-foot maximum on six lots, lots 3, 108, 143, 162, and 163 to 164. These lots, due to their location on a curved street, simply are wider than what the maximum allowed is, so that, those are actually going to be wider lots than what the code requires. In addition, they are asking for, to increase the maximum lot area to be in excess of 12,000 square feet for 24 lots throughout the subdivision. So that would be a request that is similar to the past one, that is in excess of what the code would require, but still needs to have a modification to it. The final modification is to establish the minimum floor areas for the lots. In order to step down from adjacent subdivisions, as well as be consistent with the remaining lots throughout the subdivision, they are proposing to have these three lots, 162, 63, and 64, to be a minimum of 1,800 square feet for the minimum floor area of the house, which would be one step down from the 2,000-square-foot lot, or homes, in that portion of Eagles Ridge. This is the only portion up here which abuts single-family homes in Eagles Ridge to the east or to the west. And the balance of the homes being proposed throughout are a minimum of 1,400 square feet. That is one classification higher than what is to the east in the Hoot Isle subdivision, and is one classification lower than what is in Colonial Highlands, which, one part of Colonial Highlands is 1,600 square feet for the house, and another portion is 1,400. So their proposed 1,400 is in line with all of the subdivision classification step-down requirements. Staff believes that the PD concept plan modifications to the underlying base zoning are justified as they propose only slight reductions in development standards for a few lots on the cul-de-sacs, and the balance of the proposed modifications under the PD concept plan propose development standards that are in excess of what the UDC would require. And also, the PD has committed to providing additional open space and recreation amenities, and minimum house floor area sizes, all that would be in addition to what the code would typically require. As I mentioned, the previous proposal that the developer worked with staff on included 186 lots. They have removed four lots from the subdivision in order to provide the additional open space, and that main component of that is a park centrally located in the development. That would be included in Phase 1 of the development, so that that phase would have amenities. The balance of the amenities include, as you'll see here, a little bit better on this drawing, the light green colored areas are the open space with eight-foot walking trails surrounding it, to create, I believe, in excess of almost 2,000 feet, linear feet of trail area, which, you know, is almost a half a mile, or a little bit less than half a mile of trail area throughout the entire subdivision. Along the back of these lots, another trail is proposed, which will connect down to the future hike bike trail that will be along Major Road, that then would lead out to the trail system out on Adams Dairy Parkway. The proposed park, again, is situated in this location here, and, again, these open space amenities, it does include a playground amenity, so it's not just an open space area. It is, does have some trails, a bench, and a playground amenity to be included. I previously mentioned phasing. There are two phases proposed, with the phase line running kind of this black line throughout the center of the development. The east half would be the first phase of the development, and contain 76 single-family lots, and Phase 2 would include 106 lots. Staff reviewed the proposed rezoning PD concept plan and preliminary plat against the review criteria outlined in the UDC. Staff finds that the rezoning request meets the UDC criteria, as outlined in the UDC, and therefore recommends approval of the rezoning request to SF-7/PD. Staff also reviewed the PD concept plan review criteria, and finds that it meets all of those criteria as well for the PD concept plan, and finds that the benefits of any flexibility in the standards are warranted and justified by the amenities being proposed in the subdivision. And, so therefore, staff recommends approval of the PD concept plan, with the four conditions contained in the staff report. Finally, staff reviewed the preliminary plat according to the review criteria outlined in the UDC, and staff finds that it meets all of those seven conditions, or seven criteria, and therefore recommends approval of the preliminary plat as well, subject to the 12 conditions contained in the staff report. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions before turning it over to the applicant for their presentation.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Mallon? Yes, Mr. Casey?
Mr. Mallon, you may have pointed out, but could you show us again where, which lots have the increased lot area?
Uh, yep. Hold on one second. Let me go back up to this drawing here. There's a lot of them. So lots two, three, so this lot here and this lot here are both over 12,000 square feet. Lot 14, which is over in this area here, 54, I believe 143 is one here. 54, 55, 56, some of these lots back up here in the corners.
Okay.
Lots 71, 72, 75 here. So yeah, they're, lot 131, so they're pretty evenly distributed throughout the subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mallon? Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
What are the white dots that are on the blue map? All of those white dots?
I do not know. I think they're just... No, I don't really know if they have an explanation.
Looks like the elevation mark.
Yeah, they look like elevation labels.
Yeah, it looks like the elevation label from the contours.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Mallon? All right. Would the applicant like to come forward? You'll need to be sworn in, state your name, address for the record. Oh, you can stay at the podium. Just raise your right hand and he'll...
Jesse Fulcher, 1750 North Buckley.
Could you someone swear the testimony about this case?
Yes, sir. Jesse Fulcher, 1750 North Buckley.
Sir? Put it in the mic, please.
Sorry. Jesse Fulcher, 1750 North Buckley, Fayetteville, Arkansas.
Could you spell the last name for us, please?
Yeah, F-U-L-C-H-E-R.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, for hearing us twice. Sorry that we had to come back. We were here probably two months ago with very similar project. We went forward to city council and really took some of the feedback from the planning commissioners about our amenities and green space, and from the council as well, and tried to go back and revamp the plan, and kind of come through a different route versus just a straight zoning, the SF-7. I think the PD allowed these amenities and some of the items that we're providing to be tied in with our approval, and so that's really why we've come back through the planning commission, a very similar project, and Mr. Mallon outlined many of the changes that we've proposed in here. But just a quick run-through, the original PRO that was provided for the overall development, which includes this property as well as the surrounding ones, obviously it's expired multiple times. The surrounding properties have already been rezoned to SF-7/PD, for the most part, I think all of them have been. So we've really just got this one remnant piece of an old project that's expired, that the Blue Springs Land Bank has. So we've come through with an SF-7/PD. Obviously, it's the most consistent zoning with the zoning districts adjacent to this property. What we've agreed to within the PD is the green space. We're going above the 10%, we're at 15.1%, which is greater than the original PRO, which is only 8% over the entire project. It's greater than the SF-7-based zoning, and so we feel like that's going to be a great amenity. As Mike pointed out, our trail is almost a half mile long, so it'll tie into Major Road, so it'll provide really connectivity, not only within our subdivision, but really to the adjacent subdivisions, communities as well. And then we've added a park and playground. I think there were some concerns from at least one commissioner and probably some counselors as far as identifying what these amenities would be. So I feel like with the graphics we've put up here, we've noted the playground, the playground area, or the playground structure, and benches, kind of a connecting trail through the middle of the playground, again, providing connectivity within our subdivision. There were some comments about the minimum square footage required within our development, so we upped that up to 1,400, with the exception of the three lots in the corner that have to be a minimum of 1,800. Everything else within the subdivision will be a minimum 1,400, which is equal to or even larger than some of the existing developments around our property. The only real concerns, I think, outside of the green space that we'd heard about were concerns with rentals, and whether the people that lived in these homes would own them or rent them. I don't know if the city attorney made any comments to the commission about the fact that's not really something that's considered. It's certainly nothing that's listed in the comprehensive land use plan or the city zoning ordinances. Nothing that you'll see in the staff report ever mentions who will occupy a unit. It's simply the land use and the zoning designation. But I did want to point out the fact that there's about 6,000 rental households in the city of Blue Springs right now, and there's a lot of people that move into Blue Springs or are in Blue Springs that have not purchased a home yet and want to rent a home. A lot of those are out of the fear from what they saw that happened in 2008 with the Great Recession, and they saw people lose their investments in their homes. So people are waiting longer to purchase a home. A lot of students getting out of college, as I'm sure you read, are in amounts of debt, and so they're taking longer to purchase homes. And honestly, there's just generational differences. People are waiting longer, millennials and younger people are waiting longer to purchase a home. They're focusing more on their careers, paying down their student loan debt, their relationships, and then later in life, they're actually then purchasing a home and having children. And oftentimes, people are trying out a city. Maybe they've got a job they're not sure that's going to last, or they're not sure about the community, and so they will rent homes to try out a community before they actually set down those roots in that community through the purchase of a home. And another thing, just to point out as far as rentals go, is the chat report, the community housing assessment report that was conducted by the city just a few years ago, one of the things that they pointed out is that there's, the rental stock is not keeping up with the demand. The fact that there's a huge demand for new rental and good rental, there's a lot of people in older rental units who would probably like an opportunity to get into a newer rental unit, maybe in a better school district, and in maybe an area of the city that they would prefer to live in over where they are now. And so providing a variety of housing types, not people types, but housing types, whether it be large homes or small homes, whether those be rental or for sale, throughout our cities is what we need to be providing. Everybody should have that opportunity, whether they can afford to rent, to buy a home, whether they want to buy a home. They have an opportunity to live in a home within a neighborhood that they choose within a city and not be restricted to only certain parts of the city. So, again, I don't want to talk about the rental portion of it, but I feel like it had to be addressed to some degree. I think when we look at, what we're supposed to be looking at, which is our land use decisions and our policies within our comprehensive land use plan and our city ordinances, it's very apparent that this project meets those, which is why staff has, over and over, said that this project has their full backing, and I appreciate the commission's support of this project, or partial support of this project the last round. I hope we get your support again tonight. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me up. Our engineer, Dave Rennie, is here as well, as well as our attorney, Christine Butchie Head, if you have any questions for us, let me know. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Fulcher? Yes, Commissioner Casey?
Earlier, we received a memo with an amendment to one of the staff conditions, and I just wanted to ask if you were aware of that, if you had any concerns.
Thank you for reminding me. I don't know that I got a copy of it, but I'd be happy to review it real quick.
I can just read it to you real quick if you like. It says, "Road improvements to southeast Major Road extension must be," and then previously it said submitted, and now it says completed prior to approval of the final plat.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Banks?
I just want to clarify one thing, just so, you really pressed on the fact that the rental market, so are you planning? And I guess I can ask, I mean, it doesn't mean that I can't. Rentals, or are these going to be for sale? So that I'll know whether they're for sale or not.
Yeah. When we contracted to purchase this property, our intent was to rent these, and the only reason we intended to rent these is because that's where we're at currently in our program in this market. We built homes over in Gardner, we put them up for sale, the first homes that we built in this area, and they didn't sell. And so we put for rent signs, or for lease signs, and we sold them immediate, or, excuse me, rented and leased them up immediately. And so we were seeing either our price point was too high, there was obviously a demand for rental units, and so we were like, okay, let's try this program, let's get ourselves established. I think as my colleagues mentioned at the previous meeting, we're a home seller. We build the homes and we sell them. That is 99.9% we do in every single market. We're just not there at this point. We want to be, and we will be at some point, but I think at this point, the idea is to rent them, but if we get it to where we think we can get a really great price point and be competitive in the market against some of the other builders in this area, we will try to sell them. I hope that answered your question.
Commissioner Banks, I would point out that the city's code doesn't regulate rentals.
Right.
So can be taken into consideration during your vote.
Right. I just know the market prices have gone up because there's fewer homes for sale, so I just wondered if they would be.
It's a fair question, and if we could figure out that we can be successful selling it, we will sell them. We'd prefer to sell them. That's our program.
Any other questions? Just one second, Commissioner Cradell. Could you say what company you're with again, please?
I'm sorry, Roush Coleman Homes. My apologies.
Commissioner Cradell?
What is your rental price range?
Again, I would just point out that that's...
I think we need to keep the questions relevant to and not necessarily about the rentals.
Taken into consideration.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone that would like to speak? Yes?
I would like to point out, I did forget, they did provide conceptual building elevations for the homes that I forgot to run through real quick.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to show, final building elevations would need to be done at the time of the PD final plan, but the proposed homes appear to be able to meet any code requirements that we may have. They include a significant amount of masonry on the front elevations, probably more masonry than what we typically see on single-family homes throughout the subdivision. So staff does believe that those are high-quality building elevations with high-quality materials, so.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? All right. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition?
Yeah.
Yes? You'll need to come...
I have some questions.
Well, you'll need to come forward, be sworn in. If you can approach the podium there, and please speak into the mic so we can hear you.
Okay. You won't have any problem hearing me.
You'll need to raise your right hand, and he'll swear you in.
Could you someone swear the testimony about this case? Something like that? I do. Cynthia L. McMullin, 516 Southeast Colonial Court, Blue Springs, Missouri, 64014, 5578. Okay, I have some questions. Who will serve the new area as far as police and utilities?
The city would provide police services, sewer, and, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but is this Water District 13?
That's correct. It's Water District 13.
So the water would be served by Public Water District 13?
Okay. I am in Colonial Highlands, and I understand that the Blue Springs Police Department does not patrol my area. That that's the county.
Ma'am, could you...
And if I call 911, I get the county. So my question is, with all this other building going on, who is going to serve them? And I think that's a question that needs to be answered before any building happens. Okay? That's question number one. The Water Department is number 13, however, the sewer is still handled by Blue Springs.
Yes.
So you pay a water bill and you pay a sewer bill. Who will monitor the streets, the streetlights? How will that be maintained? Will that be Blue Springs, or will that be somebody else?
Typically, I believe the developers install the streetlights.
That they have to work, and the ones in Colonial Highlands do not work.
Then, once they are installed...
They have worked part of the time, but they don't work all the time.
Okay. Then that would be a city issue, typically.
The, I realize now, after listening today, that there are, the lakes, the water, whatever, I call it a lake, that, who maintains that?
The HOA would maintain those.
The HOA would maintain those on a daily basis in terms of mowing and anything.
Okay. So I'm assuming, and I know what assume does to you, I'm assuming that the HOAs will have to take on more responsibility, and there will be HOAs for the new areas?
Yes.
Okay. Will they be active?
Yes.
They won't just collect dues? They will actually do something?
Yeah, no, the city code does require, and we will dedicate those tracks to the HOA and put on the subdivision documents that the HOA will have to maintain all of those areas.
Will there be HUD assistance or Section 8 housing in these new areas?
I would let the developer respond to that, but they have not made those plans.
Why don't you finish asking your questions, then I can have him respond to questions that pertain to him.
Okay. Well, I might lose tracks, but that's okay. The open spaces and the trails and the parks and the playgrounds that you spoke of, who's responsible for maintaining those?
Those would be all maintained by the HOA.
All maintained by the developer.
What happens if the HOA fails to maintain them?
Then the city would go through our normal maintenance code enforcement provisions and...
Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. They will be punished?
They would be made to be brought to properties in compliance.
Maintenance of roads. I'm specifically concerned about Wyatt Road. It is a disaster. Now, on the other side of Adams Dairy, they've got a brand-new, beautiful road. But on the side, on the side east of Adams Dairy is atrocious, and that's where all the building's going on. So who's responsible for that?
The city is responsible for maintaining Wyatt Road, but Wyatt Road does not border this project?
It borders Colonial Highlands.
Yeah, the south side of Colonial Highlands.
Yes.
It does not border this project.
And that's how we get into Colonial Highlands, is through Wyatt Road.
Okay.
And it has potholes that would swallow up an elephant.
Then that's a city maintenance.
Okay. So who do I talk to about getting that taken care of?
You can talk to me after the meeting, and I can pass along your concerns.
Okay. Great. Okay.
And I just want to remind you, as you're asking your questions, they can't hear if you don't speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Really? You can't hear me?
Well, he's trying to pick it up on the recording as well. You don't want to be too close.
Okay. I think that is basically all of my questions. Was there anything you didn't hear from me that you want me to repeat?
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mrs. McMullin?
No. Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, and I will look forward to coming to more meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might wait, and if there's other questions for you, just have you address them all at the same time. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing none. If you want to, Mr. Fulter, address her, and you were sworn in already.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the only question that staff did answer is about Section 8 HUD. No, sir. None of that.
No Section 8 HUD?
No, sir. All standard, single-family homes.
All right. All right. That brings it back up here for comments, questions among the commissioners. Commissioner Banks?
I do have a question. Since he's not going to have them for sale, you're going to maintain the playground and everything, and you should not be collecting dues?
Exactly. Our management company anterior to our company will maintain the detention ponds, the parks, the trails, any common area that would be maintained by a POA, we maintain.
And you have a management company up here that's going to be managing that?
Yes, we have a management company that will take care of all of it, yes. They currently take care of the projects we have in the area.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Anything else from the commissioners? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close both of the public hearings. And I would consider a motion on rezoning, or entertain a motion on rezoning.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Billups?
Rezoning is basically a cleanup of a zoning that is dead, so we have to do something to it. It has to be rezoned. There's no question about that. It cannot stay the way it is. I would move for approval of the rezoning RC 01207216 as presented.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Billups, a second from Commissioner Banks. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Nay.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokemberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Fairbanks. Fairbanks.
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye.
So that motion passes, and we will send that recommendation to City Council. Their meeting is February 19th at 6:00.
Wednesday.
A Wednesday. So next item would be, I would entertain a motion on the PD concept plan for Cambridge Park.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Billups?
This subdivision meets or exceeds every rule that we have in place, with the exception of three lots because they're on a cul-de-sac who have a small frontage. We do not, in my opinion, have a choice in this in how we vote because it meets all the rules. And the fact of it being rental or not rental or for sale is out of our jurisdiction. We have no control over that whatsoever. We could have any project come before us, and after we approve it, that could change. It has nothing to do with what we're doing here. I move for approval of the PDC 01207215 for those reasons with the four staff conditions.
For that reason, I will second it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Billups, a second from Commissioner Banks. Again, this will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Cradoff?
Nay.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Nay.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokemberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Chairman Graham?
Aye.
That motion passes as well, and we will be sending our recommendation to City Council on Wednesday, February 19th, for their meeting at 6:00 as well. Next item is the preliminary plat for Cambridge Park.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Billups?
For the same reasons I've already stated, I would also move for approval of the preliminary plat, PP 01207214, with the 12 staff conditions modifying number eight as requested by staff.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Billups, a second from Commissioner Banks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, so that preliminary plat is approved. Next item on the agenda is preliminary plat for Eagles Creek, and Mr. Wright is going to present that to us.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Graham and commissioners. Before you this evening is a request for preliminary plat for Eagles Creek, which is a proposed 183-lot, single-family subdivision on 58.64 acres, which is located west of Adams Dairy Parkway and south of the Lake Village and Moreland Village subdivisions. The subject property is ZF-7, single-family residential. A preliminary plat for this site was approved in 2007 but expired in 2009. There are no overlay districts on the subject property, and therefore a rezoning for planned development is not needed, provided that all UDC requirements for the SF-7 zoning district and the detached house neighborhood lot building type have been met. As noted in the staff report, based on staff's review, all requirements of the UDC have been met for the base zoning district and the building type. The preliminary plat does show a six-phase, single-family subdivision with the main access provided from Adams Dairy Parkway at the southeast corner of the site, which will align with southeast Willow Place at the east and Willow Tree. This new street named Hudson Drive will be developed as a collector's street and will run the width of the property, eventually terminating at the western property line, which will allow future connection to 7 Highway when the frontage properties on 7 Highway In addition to the Hudson Drive development, additional street connections will be made from existing streets from Lake Village and Moreland Village subdivisions, including Washington Drive, Harvard Drive, and Adams Drive. Harvard Drive will also provide a future street connection to Adams Dairy Parkway, so by the time the second phase is developed, there will be two connections to Adams Dairy Parkway for this development. Additional street connections will be made to the south on Southwest 2nd Street and southeast 5th Street, which will connect to both Eagles Ridge and the Cambridge Park subdivision, which you've just heard prior to this. All lots do fall within the minimum and maximum lot sizes for the detached house neighborhood lot, which is 65-foot minimum to 100-foot max. All the lots fall within that range as proposed on the preliminary plat. And then minimum 7,200-square-foot lots to 12,000-square-foot-max lots, all the lots also fall within that range, and all lots will be developed with the standard setback building coverage, building height, and frontage type requirements as laid out in the code. A minimum of 10% open space is required for the base SF-7 zoning district, which would require a minimum of 5.86 acres of open space that meet the open space system requirements in the UDC. The site has provided 5.89 acres, which meets that requirement. They're meeting that requirement through several tracks with pocket parks, trails, community pool and playground, a dog park, and other outdoor recreation spaces. There's also an additional, almost a half an acre of additional open space that is not included as the active open space, which would include the buffers along the west property line, which is adjacent to multifamily zoning, as well as some additional green space that's been provided in the middle of the subdivision over some sanitary sewer A conceptual landscape plan has also been provided in the staff packet as well. A final landscape plan is required to be submitted and reviewed administratively prior to the installation of landscaping in the first plat. A conceptual street tree plan has also been provided, which shows a mix of shade and ornamental And then they've also, a monument sign is proposed near the southeast corner of the site off of Adams Dairy Parkway and Hudson Drive. Conceptual image of that has also been provided, and that would go through, be reviewed administratively by staff through our standard sign permit process. Other items that were provided in the staff packet include conceptual images of dog park amenities and the playground as well. A majority of the subdivision is proposed to have a minimum floor area of 1,400 square feet. Lots adjacent to the Eagles Ridge subdivision are proposed to have a minimum of 1,600 square feet to meet the step-down requirement where the adjacent lots are 1,800 square feet. The Moreland Village subdivision, which is located at the northeast corner, has a minimum of 1,200 square foot. And then the Lake Village, which is predominantly on the north side of the subdivision, did not have a minimum floor classification when it was developed. And lastly, conceptual front building elevations have been provided, as well as floor plans in the packet, which show a mix of single-story and two-story homes. The building elevations are similar to the homes that are currently, recently been completed or currently under construction in nearby subdivisions, including Colonial Highlands, Eagles Ridge, and Parkway Estates. Staff did review the preliminary plat and finds that all UDC requirements and the review criteria for the preliminary plat approval have been met, and therefore staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat. You did receive a copy of a memo in which there were four conditions that are typically standard on preliminary plats that were left off of the staff report, and therefore staff is requesting that these additional four conditions, numbers 18 through 21, be added as requested by engineering. Again, they are the standard conditions that we add related to when public infrastructure must be completed as built and maintenance bonds provided, detention verification from a professional engineer, as well as a letter from Water District 13 confirming that all of their improvements have been made prior to final plat approval. With that, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat with 21 staff conditions, including the 17 in the staff report and the four on the screen. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Wright? Commissioner Veal?
Yes. Since this will be developed over six phases, do you have an estimated time between the phases?
Yes, and the applicant may be able to provide a little bit more on that, but I do believe that they spelled that out on the preliminary plat document itself. They're not, of course, held to these dates. It's all market-driven. But they would propose to do lots 1 through 36 this year, and then it looks like approximately every year through 2027, they would be doing an additional phase.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright? All right. Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation? If you could tell us your name and your address, please.
Not a public meeting, so I don't need to be sworn in.
You don't need to be sworn in.
Okay. I'm Fred Byam with Byam Engineering. I recognize many of the phases, but not all of them. I'm not really prepared for a presentation. We've worked on this project before, and then a different developer got involved, but their plan had expired, so now we're back in it. We've already gone through that. We've met all of the UDC requirements. The open spaces, Matt went through those. I think the couple of things that I like about that is we have a dog park. We also, in the large green space, oh, there's two large green spaces in the center of the project. The one that's more horizontal east-west is the pool and playground area. The one north of that is going to have trails in it, and if we can fit it in there, I'm going to put in a frisbee golf park. The rest of it will have, the one up the north will have some playground equipment in it. We'll have sidewalks and walking trails throughout the entire subdivision, so it'll be very pedestrian-friendly. With that up, is there, are there any questions? I'm better at answering questions than I am at providing information.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Byam? Yes, Commissioner Casey?
Just double-checking, since we got this memo earlier, Mr. Wright went through the four additional conditions here that weren't on the original packet. Did you have any concerns with those?
I don't. Might have the developer go on record as being...
I don't have any.
Okay.
Good with those?
Yeah, we accept those conditions as well, and they're standard conditions, so nothing unexpected.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Byam? All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I felt stared at. Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Eagles Creek, PP-10-20-7208, with the total of the 21 staff conditions.
Can I back you up? I think you transposed that.
Oh, why did I do? Okay.
01, not 10.
PP-01.
I do know that number, sorry. Thank you for catching that with 21 staff conditions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks, a second from Commissioner Fairbanks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So noted. Motion carries. Preliminary plat is approved. Brings us to item eight, other business. Our next meeting is February 24th, 2020. Mr. Mallon, will we have agenda items?
Oh, we sure will, yeah.
We'll have a good...we'll have some agenda items. The Cambridge Park...or not Cambridge Park, the Earhart Estates.
Earhart Estates.
At Chapman Farms will be before you that evening. And then, just a reminder, we do have the Deer Creek project on the March 9th meeting.
Correct.
The only other business, I believe Karen sent out an email to all of the planning commissioners about the National Planning Conference that is in Houston this year, April 25 through 28. We do have one staff member that was going or is going, and so, as with years past, we've prefer to see commissioners go, especially those who maybe have not gone in the past or have not been to a national planning conference. It's a good educational experience to see what's going on and pick up ideas in other parts of the country, so...
Let Karen know if you're interested in going.
Yep, let Karen know or let me know.
All right.
And that would be it.
All right. Any other business?[1758.75]